Thank you for joining us this evening. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Wednesday, March 10th, at 7:30 PM in the board meeting room. So, thank you all. Welcome back. I hope everyone had a safe winter break and was vigilant as we try to continue to get all of our students back to school. So, I hope everyone had some downtime and got to do what they wanted to do and enjoyed the break. The only other thing I have to say is just a thank you. Monday night, the RTM voted to approve the appropriation request that's gone through the process. Seth Morton is the moderator of the RTM. Clara Sartori, RTM Education. Jack Davis, RTM F&amp;B. Thank you all for the work with your committees and moving that appropriation through the process. And thanks to Kate Bush. It's very interesting to see how actually well that meeting went with 100 some odd people on it and the process of voting and going through the motions. So, thank you all for the support that's gone on through the appropriation process. With that, I will turn it over, Michelle, to public comments.
Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comments, please click the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raised hand option. You will notice a blue hand icon appear in the upper corner of your screen where your face, name, and/or number appears. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted for public comment. You will have up to three minutes to comment. There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Adley.
Good evening, everyone, especially to those people who are at home. And extended warm welcome to John Scheib, Principal Architect, for our project this evening. So, welcome, John. Thank you for being here. I trust everyone had an enjoyable February recess. My announcements were relatively short tonight, but at the same time, while not implying any complacency, it seems like we've turned a wee bit of a corner or at least are in that trajectory a little bit. And that's all good news for a number of reasons. I'll touch on a couple of talking points because it's been extremely busy over the break and also in the last 24 hours or so. A lot of things have taken place. I'll touch on the announcements and then talk a wee bit further in the update that's on the agenda. But we thank our parents and staff at Tokoneak for making up their day that they had to do on the Friday before the break. We look forward to all those sixth graders out there, 10th and 11th graders who are eager to return to school next week. It's kind of fortuitous, too, that it sort of aligns our transition plan back aligned to the opportunity to vaccinate our staff. And we're tremendously excited about that opportunity and working with the town. And we'll share a wee bit more about that in a moment or two. Glad that we're able to, upon discussion today with our medical advisors, modify our spectator practice to one parent for each athlete. We'll monitor that on a weekly basis. And if we have an opportunity to extend and expand that a little bit, that's what we'll look to do. High school planning. From the last board meeting that was here, I was asked this question. I think actually Tara was asking me. And the next morning, we were actually scheduled for this meeting to follow up on a number of issues about AP exams and whether students were going to do their internships and so on and so forth. Since then, we've had a couple of meetings. There's good news and bad news. Not bad news, but the good news is there's been planning going on. The waiting process is a little bit due to AP. AP distributed a timetable, a suggested timetable for various exams, but they're all sort of different in nature and different in format of taking. They've got feedback on that and they've pulled it back to the point where it's just going to impact the actual testing windows because it's pretty expensive. So, we hope to hear on Tuesday morning some more information. And the internship is just, it's going to depend on how expensive that window is or how narrow it is. I think there's a general tenant and suggestion and a desire to actually have some form of internship. There will definitely be options if there can be some form of internship in terms of remote experience and so on that the high school is going to do that. They're also working with the parents in terms of end-of-year activities and so on. And with some of the lifting of some of these restrictions, it may give us a wee opportunity to perhaps even have a graduation this year. And that would be helpful. So, you may wait, just again, just for this week to hear from AP. But the discussions have been well underway and are ready to go depending on kind of the way that window falls. And that's also in collaboration with our community councils, the student council up there. The high schools, I just mentioned that I want to thank the board. Just a reminder, Thursday evening, that's a dedicated meeting for strategic planning. I just want to thank you because there's a lot of meetings this week. And to come together for just this particular purpose, I know it's another commitment, but it's also a second opportunity to continue to advance this work and to bring it to closure. I'm glad to report that the open choice program is in the governor's budget to date. And it exists in a sense of, for next year, there will be money set aside for professional development of staff and for planning. There's a lot that goes into the lottery system and communications and so on. So, we'll see how that extends, but that's a good indication. And if there's professional development involved for staff, we might want to have a discussion about what does that mean for us? Does that mean a commitment before we actually participate in that? So, we'll see how that plays out. But there are 50 students who will be participating from Danbury. They wouldn't participate in this region, but there's 50 students who are part of the program in the budget from Norwalk. So, that's much closer to us than we would draw from the Norwalk School potentially. So, stay tuned with that. And we look forward to continue those discussions. And just as Mr. Chairman just said, I just want to recognize the members of the RTM, F&amp;B, and Education for all of their hard work and the support in terms of adopting the administrator's contract and approving the special COVID appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Moving on, approval of minutes. It is requested that the board approve the following minutes of the special meeting held on February 5th, 2021, minutes of the special meeting and executive session held on February 9th, 2021, and minutes of the regular meeting held on February 9th, 2021. Do I have a motion? Mr. Maroni, Second Mrs. Stein, all those in favor? That is unanimous with Mrs. Akman. Thank you. Any board committee reports? Mr. Maroni.
Very quickly, the facilities committee met February 10th and are very excited to be bringing forward the feasibility study to the full board, Agenda Item 7B tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Maroni. Mrs. Akman.
Sorry. The finance committee met today and we reviewed the financials, which you will see tonight. And there were a lot of good questions at that meeting. If people want to go a little more in-depth into it, the meeting should be viewable. But we look forward to Mr. Rood's report this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman. Moving right along, presentations and discussions. We will move into Dr. Adley's update on the schools being open.
So, I'll be just a wee bit random about this, just in terms of the context. You kind of have followed along and appreciate the information that you're receiving in terms of trying to follow up with or trying to keep track of where we are with COVID and so on. But the general trend has been very, very positive across, in some ways, across the nation, across the county and in the state of Connecticut. And locally here, we have modeled that, too. So, we'll look at the cases. Tokoneak for first grade, just to mention that we took that extra precaution for a couple of days. Subsequently, the children have come back into school. Thought that was a reasonable thing to do. It was one of the first sort of clusters that we saw. There were no other cases that evolved from that. The ones that you've heard from Tokoneak since have not been in the first grade. So, that's encouraging. We look very much forward to receiving our 6th, 10th, and 11th graders back. And again, as I said, it coincides with the vaccination program that's just been rolled out. The athletics, I just shared, we'll continue to manage that. We're pleased to open that up. There's a lot of, this idea, like, it's been good news a little bit. There's also been a lot of conflicting information around athletics and spectators and so on. It seems to be a reasonable thing to do, given particularly the metrics that's been happening and just the context that is evolving a little bit. So, we're pleased to do that. The teacher vaccination, just thrilled about this because it's just, I'm pleased for our staff, for our community. I want to just recognize again Alicia Kusucci and particularly her and her staff over the, I'll call it the holiday vacation, the winter recess here. They just do yeoman's work in terms of following up and doing a great job for us. And Alicia in particular, for organizing our vaccination program. We have been fairly far along the planning to the point where we had days ready to go, so to speak. The lists and so on have been submitted. David Knopf, our director in town, has been terrific, as has Nick Jossen. Nick is an emergency regional coordinator who works with David over there. And I want to also say Paula Satliff, who is the practitioner, nurse, health nurse over at the time. And actually, a lot of you who volunteer over there, thank you because you're also going to make this really happen. But Alicia in particular, for all of our efforts to do this because no sooner was it announced than, and we really have the plan out. It's our intention really to get through about 600 vaccinations between next Friday and next Saturday. If the sign up is such that we have more, we'll back into another day, possibly Thursday. But I'll let Alicia talk a little bit more. But by the end of the next week and the start of the following week, we should have essentially the whole staff vaccinated. And that's just, that's just a very positive encouragement and necessary step. So, with that, these were the numbers on Friday. They're essentially the same today. There's not a big shift in change in the numbers. So, numbers are coming down, which is pleasing. When you see this graph now, look, if you're just seeing from your own memory, that was all red, right, for a period. And now it's, as you see it, it's changing colors, which is a good thing. Our cases are down to 76. Connecticut and Fairfield dropped significantly also. This is a remote learners. You see that the bar on the very right-hand side is for Monday. And that, for the most part, reflects that we quarantined the first grade, for the most part. And again, this is an encouraging graph here in town, the number of cases. So, this is about 20 cases, which takes us back basically to Thanksgiving time period when we last saw that. So, overall, I think the news on that front is encouraging. The vaccination program aligns nicely to our last phase of bringing all our children back. And again, I think we're turning a corner a little bit. I don't want to get too far ahead of myself on that, but it is encouraging to see. So, that's, I'd be happy to entertain questions if there are any. And I certainly want Alicia to have a few moments.
Sure, we'll do some questions and then we'll turn it over to Alicia. Mr. Seeny.
I don't think you could see the grins behind all our faces around the vaccination news. So, I'll speak for myself, it was a pretty big one. But if you look at your dashboard chart, you know, the COVID-19 case chart. Has there been, maybe this is for Alicia, has there been a mixed change between staff and students over the last few weeks?
A change between how many are staff and how many are students?
Yeah, are there any trends or has it been pretty steady in terms of ratios?
It's been pretty steady, I would say. You know, our Tokoneak first grade situation was one where I feel like we may have had some transmission there in school from student to teacher. And that's why we wanted to kind of give a little extra time and see how things transpired there. But it seems like that kind of settled down over the break. So, they all return tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seeny. Mrs. McCannan.
Understanding that we've never done anything like this before with a large-scale vaccination effort and quarantining coinciding at the same time, are there plans in place? Should we have a lot of teachers who develop a fever or other secondary symptoms during the vaccine period?
So, the main mitigator factor that we've done there is to try to schedule these towards the end of the week to give us a little bit of chance at least to plan accordingly. And if people within 12 hours or 24 hours feel sick. In general, I think the practice, the experience has been, from what I'm told from our professionals and those people who have had the vaccine, it's the second shot that is, it's more problematic. But for now, we've done the scheduling for the end of the week as our main sort of precaution and planning towards that.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie.
This is Mar, Alicia. And when the teachers come in next week and get their vaccinations, will we immediately then schedule their second dose appointments?
When they, yeah, when they schedule their first dose, we're going to just mirror that exact same schedule the second in four weeks. So, when they sign up for the first dose, it will automatically sign them up for the second dose, same time slot, just four weeks later.
Okay, so it'll be again, end of the week?
Yeah.
I have heard that the second dose is when there is a higher risk for those side effects.
Correct. And that we've experienced that with the staff that have already received a vaccine. We've noticed that as well. So, we're hoping, you know, my experience was within 24 hours, most of the people were feeling better. So, we're hoping that, you know, having it Saturday, giving it them Sunday, hopefully by Monday, people will be able to return. And really, the side effect that would keep people out would be a fever.
Alicia, do you have any numbers as to the amount of staff that based on whatever criteria they fell into have been vaccinated?
You know, I don't think it's that many. It's not, you know, it's not a huge dent in our numbers. I'm thinking probably about, rough estimate, about 50 people have been offered the vaccine. We have, you know, 14 nurses. We've had a couple of other staff members who've been able to get the vaccine, whether they're, you know, independent contractors, the physical therapists, occupational therapists, speech language, and then, you know, some other, and then that age group of 65 and up. So, it's, next week will be obviously the majority of every, hopefully, we get most everybody in Thursday and Friday, if not everyone that wants it.
Thank you. Mrs. Akman.
Dr. Adley, we keep saying "we" when we determine, when we're talking about delivering this vaccine. Does the district or the Board of Education have any liability to be aware of as now we're, when we're saying "we" and we're doling out medication?
Well, it's just really through the times, the Department of Public Health have instructed us to work collaboratively with the town. So, in terms of liability, I would have to follow up of if there's any technicality to that. I don't think that there would be, but I'll certainly check. We have to work, we have to work onto the auspices of our local health and special.
Okay, so, to be clear, this is an initiative of the Department of Health. We're helping to coordinate. If you could, just let the board know if there's anything we should be aware of, since, as you said, this is new territory for us.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman.
I just mentioned, these are updates and sometimes you learn from the update, right? And something we learned again over the break. And I want to thank the teacher because on Sunday night, for some teachers, there was a lot to take in in terms of requests to go remote at the last minute and people traveling and so on and so forth. So, I would continue to appeal to our parents to just be mindful of that, that 24-hour period. And I will also be mindful in the lead-up to vacations of the types of communications we make to parents to make sure that, and honestly, the teachers aren't put in the middle of that situation because it may seem just a simple thing, just to go to remote for another half dozen kids. But there's planning that goes into that. And so, that was just something that was a dynamic and I appreciate the efforts of our teacher just to facilitate those transitions as quickly as possible.
Mrs. Ritchie.
Maybe this is for Alicia and you may not have an answer. I haven't heard, but do we have any idea about children and vaccinations for children?
In the press release yesterday, or, I'm sorry, yeah. In the press release yesterday, they announced that 16 and up, there was a rollout for that. I think that's mid-April to late April, maybe it's even as far as May. But that will be after 45 and up. And then there's the 25 to 45, and then 16 and up. So, that was.
I would be more interested, I knew that part. The 16, the under 16 is what I'm wondering about.
I do not think that they have, that that's been determined yet. And obviously, the vaccine's not been out long enough to really have been studied in any children. So, I don't know where we are with that phase of rolling out the vaccine for younger kids.
Okay, anything else?
I don't think so. Alicia, do you have anything else?
I would just go back to the question that Ms. Akman had about the liability. So, I did ask that question today when I was at the Health Department because we are asking the school nurses to help with vaccination. And through the CARES Act, they're covered for a liability. And then, you know, the school district also has liability insurance on our nurses. And I will double-check and make sure that they are covered for that, anything other than gross negligence. But there's a training that they will go through. And, you know, there's standard questions and things that are asked of people that are getting the vaccine. And all those protocols will be followed.
Okay, thank you. I mean, that's exactly what I'm getting at, Ms. Kusucci, is that I just want to make sure, since this is really new territory for us, and I echo Mr. Seeny's comments, we're so excited that teachers can get this. We're also so excited that we can help provide assistance. But I want to make sure our nurses who have worked so hard, you know, are doing all their work and are covered or taken care of, just like I want to make sure our teachers get their vaccine. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else, Alicia?
I don't think I really have anything. There's going to be, I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions around, especially from the staff around the vaccine side effects, processes, and things like that. We're working on those communications. I just wanted to get a schedule out today and, you know, work through all those logistics. And we'll continue to communicate with everybody as we have that information, you know, kind of parsed out into an organized manner instead of just throwing sheets of paper at people. And then the process that we'll go through. But the scheduling is really, they schedule their first. The second one will mirror that. And then the only other thing is if they do sign up, because they can go through the VAM system and sign up for a vaccine elsewhere, we just won't be able to facilitate their second dose. So, there is ability for teachers and people who maybe don't want to come back to Darien on Saturdays. They can't get in on Friday for a vaccine. There are other avenues that they can get a vaccine at, too. It just, we just won't be coordinating that.
Thank you, Alicia. I don't think we can say enough, but I speak for the board, I think, in thanking you for your tireless efforts. I know it's 24 by 7. And to your team and the nursing team throughout the district, just thank you so much. And for the whole staff, a lot of hard work goes into this on a daily basis. Thank you.
You're welcome. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Good. Moving along, further discussion on the revised feasibility study to remove the portable classrooms and update the libraries at the elementary schools. Dr. Adley and Mr. John Scheib. Welcome, Mr. Scheib.
So, this evening, I'm actually, I mean, I'm really excited this evening, to be honest with you, of bringing forward the next rendition of a proposal. I want to thank Mr. Chairman, Dennis Maroni, as Chair, and the members of that committee for their feedback at the last meeting. Also, the feedback from the board in general from the last meeting, that means you're very sure kind of what we've done since then or a sort of lens that we've looked at. I walked away from that last meeting upon reflection thinking that the board has given me relatively a charge or a interpretation of it as, look, can you tell us what we need in these buildings and what's your priorities around that? So, really, that is what was brought before the last facilities subcommittee. And essentially, it boils down to a couple of things. This is, John, who you know from Northeast Collaborative Architects, took the KGND study, the five-year study, and the capital program and anything that had to be built into the projects, built those in. You'll see in this that I've confined this to three schools. I want to thank also Mr. Lynch is on the screen and Mr. Rulo as part of the administrative team. We looked at this, we visited the schools with the principals. We had a number of meetings essentially. But essentially, it comes down to this. I've looked at the instructional programs in the schools. And where we need to be equitable is in instructional experiences that our children get. I don't think we can be 100% equitable in every single facility and every single capacity. But certainly, the instructional program needs to be the same in certain aspects of certain schools. That's not possible, given the space. So, you'll see that this project highlights three schools. It highlights a phasing plan. It highlights the next steps in the process. And essentially, it focuses on Hindley, Holmes, and Royal. It's in that order for a proposal for this evening and for the facilities committee at their last meeting. Certainly, I'm open for, I would be keen to bundle things together as the board sees fit and move things along quicker. But I presented it in that way. A, for Hindley to, Hindley's a major project first because the number of portables, the condition that they're in, the safety, that to me is the number-one priority. We put in Holmes because it could be done, right, fairly quickly. And then Royal and Royal with some of the spaces. So, you'll see that we combined a couple of items here. One is classroom space. The libraries, the libraries that we are renovating here, particularly Hindley and Royal, are just not adequate. They're inadequate, right? I don't think I need to go on about the portables. That's been on our plate for a wee while and it sort of speaks for itself. So, what do we do about the other schools? We dropped out Tokoneak. Tokoneak Library can be accommodated. And it doesn't change the library reimagined frame. The same things can take place. We set aside the middle school library and the high school library. Those things can take place in other formats and in other ways. And we're focused on this project of these three schools. So, it's with that that John will walk you through some of the stuff that I've just spoken to and give you a sense of it. You do have large printouts of the schools themselves. For anybody who's watching, the board would receive this even a copy of the PowerPoint that you're going to see that is posted online right now for any members of the community who are watching. If you want to go follow along on the PowerPoint, you can. Or you can just sort of watch with us. With that, I'll turn it over to John. There's, that's the essence of what we've done. I'm excited to present this or introduce John to present it for us. Thank you for your work, John. And the floor is yours, sir. Thank you. Welcome back.
Certainly, thank you. Hopefully, the microphone or ourselves be clearly and not as sound as your guests of your time. But I did want to thank you for this opportunity to come and present this. I think it is a very exciting opportunity and it was a pleasure.
Oh, now I'm on, okay. Sorry about that. So, thank you for this opportunity again. I was saying I do have two masks on, so it might be, I'll speak as loud and clear as I can. It is a pleasure to be your guest this evening and to present this. I think it's an exciting opportunity. A couple of preliminary items that this study is based on, some that Alan alluded to. But one is, there's a commitment to these existing buildings. They have significant additions that are less than 25 years old. They are very well-maintained. They are very well-cared for by the staff and the communities. So, this study does reflect the overriding premise that these buildings can be renovated, added onto, and transformed into excellent 21st century elementary schools. The, one of the other premises has to do with enrollment projections and looking at how these schools will be impacted over the next eight to 10 years. And if there is any phasing, one of the things that will be important to start to look at is updates to those enrollments over the next couple of years. And then also, the commitment there with basically how the, how these schools can be transformed. I think there's, what we did in taking a look at this was, our overview basically looks at an analysis of the needs, design concept summary, and then scope estimates timeframe. So, we'll look at those three as a group or as individuals. And then, when we're looking at the overall plan, the design concept plans, you'll see that there is a, we'll reference the plans while we're talking about scope and estimates as well. And then when we're looking at the overall plan, the design concept plans, you'll see that there is a, we'll reference the plans while we're talking about scope and estimates as well. So as Alan said, the initial study began with the removal of the portables at the three schools. And then enhancing the library and media centers to facilitate a new learning commons model at those spaces. We expanded, the scope of the study was expanded to focus then only on Hindley, Holmes and Royal and the types of improvement projects that could be created. We incorporated the draft educational specifications, so similar to Ox Ridge that had an educational specification. There were ed specs that are in draft form right now. So we're working side by side to develop this study with that. And then the classroom size, and this is one of the things that, in terms of coming up with the count of classrooms, looking at how enrollments are. But that classroom count and size is important because it also, this is another piece where the focus and the delivery of Darien is to provide generally smaller class sizes than some communities. So there's a focus on that. And then, you know, looking at spaces created for Ox Ridge and recently a Tokenique to be on as close a parallel as can be. Also expanded was looking at the long-range capital improvements that priority one, I understand, was approved. And therefore, you'll see that the priority one items have been removed from the list when we get to that point. But overall, you know, there are still roof and exterior improvements. There are still MEP, mechanical electrical plumbing upgrades required. And then some remaining items from the KGND report. And then incorporating costs for some site planning considerations. I'll say that clearly that at this point, the study does not involve intensive traffic study on any of these sites. So at this point, it is a placeholder for funding and requires some additional study. So the process overall is an area that we, again, we started with conceptual design plans from the earlier study work. Looking at what form the additions might take in order to create, to replace portables and to enhance the libraries and media centers. There were various options. And I think when we worked with the facilities committee and even met with this full board, there were some options earlier that were looked at. These options right now are the selected options for each school. Focus on only spaces, providing additions for only spaces that are replaced by the portables. And then, as Alan said, the library media center for Hindley and at Royal. They consider the enrollment projections that were updated last year. Reviews with the principals of each school, those were critical, important feedback that was received. And then we refine those conceptual plans and you'll see how those came together. So with those goals, or with, with that process came, so one, eliminate the portables. Number two, newer significant renovations to create learning commons. Adequate or appropriate classroom size and count. Incorporate the infrastructure capital improvement plan into the cost summary. And then the site work that I mentioned as items requiring further study would be included in the cost summary. So the important part here was to come up with a comprehensive plan, all encompassing plan for each school. The goal was to achieve, for general classroom counts, Hindley 24, Holmes 24, Royal 22. So that is in addition, that is an increase of what there is now. It is built around trying to create optimal class size and have the schools be prepared for the future. So the plan for Hindley was to have an addition, to have music rooms, the learning commons, that's the library media center. Two new classrooms, DLC program relocates to Ox Ridge, so that nets two more classrooms. And then various renovations to classrooms and specialized learning spaces. So in the plan for Hindley, the overall plan looks like where you see music and learning commons. That is where the new addition would be. It is in the, is basically on the southeast part of the site. It's, or the back corner, if you will. But it extends the 1996 addition or the mid 90s addition further to the, further to the east. Any areas that are, any paved play areas that are taken up there are replaced by the fact that the portables will provide new open area. It creates a plan that is two-story, at least where you have two classrooms on the upper floor. And in the lower right of this image is the second floor of the building. And in the slightly, in the slightly more vibrant yellow color, there are two additional classrooms. One thing to keep in mind with Hindley is that this plan relocates the stair at that end of the building. So that will be a part of the planning and the creation of that new addition. And largely, there are some minor renovations on the first floor, some increased size of classrooms. And the increase or the resultant two net classrooms where the DLC program has been relocated to Ox Ridge. On the second floor, there are significant renovations to the original part of the building. A lot of former classrooms are converted into specialized learning spaces or offices. So that where we had the small, where the classroom size study found the smallest classrooms, we've been able to repurpose those into more appropriately sized spaces. At Holmes, the, again, there is an addition proposed for Holmes. It would include music rooms, two classrooms and some specialized learning spaces. The learning commons and specialized spaces would be part of the renovation. Holmes has the smallest addition. It is, it is in the upper right on this page. It is effectively about a three-classroom addition, two stories. The second floor plan, I'll just immediately go to that, but that is on the next page. And it encompasses the areas in color. They're saying the specialized and classroom and specialized learning spaces. But taking a look at Holmes on the overall, the learning commons is a renovation. And that is in the place of the existing library media center. It is increased in space in that the programs, some of the specialized learning spaces that are in there now with some metal dividers are relocated to the new addition. I believe that's SRBI, and that would be on the second floor of the new addition. So Holmes has more, a little less intensive renovations, a smaller compressed footprint for new addition.
As John transitions, just stating the obvious that the gymnasiums have remained the same. There's no adjustment to gymnasiums here.
At Royal, there are some differences with Royal. The addition, similar to Hindley, has the music rooms, the learning commons in the new addition and four classrooms as opposed to. The ELP program relocates to Ox Ridge. That opens up some interior space. And then classroom and specialized spaces are renovated. So at the top of the page, again, learning commons, music and four classrooms are part of the new addition. You'll notice this is in the location of the four current, four classroom building that I always say was built in the 70s, but Mike Lynch keeps reminding me that it's all the way back to the 50s. So it's, so it's of, the intent here was that that building is not as robust as either the original building from the 1930s or the 1990s addition. So in order to try to have the most durable building going forward, the idea was to demolish the library media center here and that four classroom extension. So Royal will certainly need some additional phasing to make the new construction happen. It's a more challenging project from a logistics standpoint. But it is also one that nets some good results. There are a number of interior existing spaces like ELP that can provide for some of the specialized learning spaces. And then that starts to open up and create the 22 classrooms. Couple other things with Royal. There's an interior stair between the, basically between the gym and the auditorium right now. The, this plan calls for removing that stair and creating a ramp system. There is already a ramp at Royal that basically connects the 1990s, 1990s construction to the original building. So this effectively allows the grade transitions across the school building to be universal for accessibility. No longer will somebody have to go out and into a lift and then come down and enter, I think, still into the gym before they can go back into the corridor. So this solves a number of problems as well in terms of looking at this plan. So to transition over to scope and estimates and how big is the addition going to be? And how much is that going to cost? And how long does it take to build? That's where we'll go next. With Hindley, returning to Hindley again, the addition proposed is about 10,300 square feet, mostly on the first floor, but there is some second floor space. One of the things that happens here with Hindley is that it allows, by putting the volumes, the way we've shown them, the reading area of the learning commons and presentation area can be a little bit higher ceiling. And the music rooms can have a little bit higher ceiling. And then the demolition of the existing library media center is 3,000 square feet. Removal of about 3,300 square feet of portables. And then the renovations, the infrastructure upgrades and site scope. So to see that now in the numbers, and we can go back and forth if there's any questions. Estimates on the addition, about four and a half to four and three-quarter million. The demolition and site, this is for demolishing the library media center, but also restoring the west facade of Hindley, the original old building, where it was actually the original main entrance. So doing some restoration to that facade of the building. And then, and then the replacement of the site, basically to kind of a front lawn. And then removal of portables and site improvements there, that's to restore the paved play area. Major renovations at Hindley, again, largely the second floor of the original building. But it also includes the DLC classroom spaces and some of those other first floor renovations. Minor renovations, these are ones where it's more cosmetic in nature to where we're not, you know, just to distinguish, a major renovation would be taking down walls and repositioning and relocating the building systems in those spaces. Minor renovations are more cosmetic where it's just repurposing a room for a different use that it didn't have before, but not really doing any major wall, wall, ceiling, doors, and then building systems associated. The infrastructure projects at Hindley, now, the infrastructure projects were included in the memo narrative that went out last week. And it highlighted, these are just the cost summary items. But it highlighted the fact that Hindley does have a fair amount of priority two and priority three projects that are tied to the HVAC, new ventilation systems. So Hindley is the one where there's more priority two, priority three projects that are encompassed in the future. And then the site scope to be determined, that allowance there is for additional study to look at a potential exit or entrance off of Route 1 to the east side of the main parking lot. So in essence, even though this plan doesn't show it, the extension of the bus loop all along the bottom or west side of Hindley is a major goal. So extending the bus loop would involve potentially impacting the entrance and exit to the parking lot off to the west side of the building. And site and the site considerations there are looking to the north and the ability to connect onto Route 1. So overall, Hindley is the largest in total scope and cost. It does have significant renovations and it has a fair amount of infrastructure upgrades. Holmes, the addition here is 7,500 square feet. And there is no other general demolition of permanent building. There is removal of approximately 1,700 square feet of portable classrooms. There are the renovations, including renovations to the major renovations at the library media center and others. Infrastructure upgrades and site scope here actually focuses on the potential for the property to the north of the building or to the right on this plan and the ability to create an access drive and additional parking. Again, the addition at Holmes is a true two-story stacked addition where the footprint would be the same, same size on both floors. And looking at that, the addition cost 3.5 to 3.75 million. Removal and site, this is the removal of the portables and restoration of that area of the site. You know, there's a potential here that that area of the site could be both paved and greenscape. You know, maybe even used for educational, dedicated educational purpose. Major renovations, again, focusing on the library media center, the new learning commons, about 750,000 to a million. That does include the acoustical concerns and the separation of the gym from the current library media center where the floor, what was a formerly, what was a formerly stage floor extends from the gym on into the current library media center. So sound transmission is a major issue there. These major renovations would include the full separation of that floor, separating the gym from the library media center at the floor itself. You know, basically coming in and putting a new slab on grade in there. And then for that portion of the library media center and then extending the wall structure down through so that it gives proper acoustical separation. The infrastructure needs at Holmes, Holmes has a significant amount of priority one. Infrastructure projects that are just been approved. So priority two and priority three and remaining KGND report items are much less significant at Holmes. And again, that site scope as far as connecting with the, the potential there for some regrading, some adjustments to stormwater and the potential for the new parking and access drive to the north. So Holmes, total costs range about 9.625 million to 11.410. I think this is a point to stop, and I didn't stop here at Hindley. But the totals are including soft costs. And originally, we were kind of shifting soft costs up and down based on when the project might happen or certain. project might happen or certain, are there certain logistics and certain circumstances that push soft costs at one school to be significantly higher than another? In the end, we came back to the 40%. It's important to understand that, so that includes everything from design fees to potential for hazardous materials and doing this full thorough study about what's potentially unknown, site investigations and geotechnical work and all that preliminary legwork that would have to go into looking at the potential for additions onsite, potential site improvements and traffic study. But it also includes potential temporary other phasings and logistics that could come up, and Royal's one where you'll start to see why that could be a significant impact. It includes the owner contingency, you know, that alone these days should be 10, 12, even 15%. And it includes escalation. We're seeing a quick note on escalation. There was a time, maybe a couple months ago, where, and the demonstration was projects were hitting right on budget, or we had three in a row come in exactly 10% under budget. It was almost uncanny. But very quickly, we're seeing the pendulum swing the other way. I think that there are serious material challenges right now in the industry, across the construction industry. Lumber has doubled, and I think the last time, I think we were talking, we were talking a little bit about escalation, and lumber went from a 50% increase to a full 100% increase just in the couple months, even when we thought that the shortages were over. The costs are still heading up pretty high. So looking at Royal, the addition here at Royal again was 12,500 square feet. So it is the largest footprint and the overall largest addition proposed. It is one story because that north side or the up on the page part of Royal is only one story. The gym and the auditorium there kind of end the second story. As you can see, the second story at Royal is just a single L, as opposed to Holmes where it's the second story is a full connected U. The demolition at Royal is larger also. The Library and Media Center and that four classroom addition come to about 9,000 square feet. And removal of portables, Royal somewhere in the middle, about 2,500 square feet of portables. Renovation, pretty significant renovations at Royal on both floors, largely in the 1930s or original building. And then infrastructure upgrades at Royal, you'll see they're certainly less than Hindley, but more than Holmes. And then the site scope here, less so. There was some study to look at alleviating some congestion, and that would continue with this. So the addition at Royal, looking at 5.5 to 5.75 million. Demolition and site restoration, 350,000 to 400,000. Removal of portables and the restoration of that part of the site, 175,000 to 200,000. There are some challenges with the playscapes and things at Royal as well. So most of the playscapes to the, that surround the current portables would actually be fine because the new addition, the net effect of Royal will actually be giving you more land available. So there'll actually be some new, you'll gain play area or paved, most likely paved play area to the north of the new addition at Royal. And major renovations, 4.25 to 4.5 million. Minor renovations, about 500,000. There's less cosmetic renovation at Royal than the other buildings because of, it's kind of either all or nothing. The 1960s building, I mean, sorry, the 1990s building, it needs almost no work. The 1930s building needs a fair amount. The infrastructure costs at Royal, again, this is just itemizing what are the priority two and priority three, long-range planning items and remaining KG and D study items, and site scope, an allowance there. So Royal's total costs, 18.935 to 20.44 million. So the timeframe for all of these, I think the, we were looking at in general terms, design phase for the work, local approvals, talking about approximately one year for that timeframe. These renovations are fairly complex, and the design phases should reflect, the design timeline should reflect that, that there's going to be a lot of investigation. And, you know, still some continued planning and final meshing with the end spec. And so we really need, really want to be sure about program, want to be sure about enrollment projections, want to be sure about the spaces that we've designated thus far, test the assumptions. And then construction, approximately two years. We're saying major activity from June of year one to August of year two as far as construction goes. So I don't want to say that you can do the whole thing in 14 months because it usually doesn't play out that way. You know, sometimes you see projects that, you know, want to bid in the spring, hire a contractor in May, and start construction in June. Well, anytime that happens, you're digging foundations in January. It always happens. So the plan here is to start with construction, true construction in the winter and spring, and plan accordingly, get some metals done, get materials ordered so that when June 1 does hit, everything is ready to go, or June 15, whatever the year holds, everything is ready to go for that new addition. And major renovations, because each summer, the summer of the year one and the summer of year two are the times to get the major amount of renovations done. All of the major renovations we've looked at can happen during that time. So with, again, with the proper planning and proper execution. So in terms of looking at phasing, one aspect of looking at this is, do you want to consider phasing them by project so that the entire Royal project happens on one timeline, the entire Hindley project happens on one timeline, the entire Holmes project? Or pair one up, pair two of them up and do the third at a different time? Or do you want to phase construction? Do you want to begin the project, design all three? That's certainly an option, is design all three and start to put them into a parallel path and then potentially phase only the construction part of it? One of the things to consider with phasing is, do you want to look at the priority basis? We did consider Hindley to be the highest priority. Again, the number, the sheer number and age of portables, the amount of infrastructure projects still to be done in, under priority two and three for infrastructure costs projects. All of those things contribute to keeping Hindley at a highest priority. There might be a reason to phase projects by priority. And then the delivery method, that's something to talk about the next steps on how these projects want to be delivered. I believe Ox Ridge is being done by a construction manager at risk. Is that something to consider here, to bringing on a construction manager at risk that would oversee all three projects and work hand in hand with the design team to develop budgets and then come to a guaranteed maximum price and then execute the projects? So those are items to consider as well about how those next steps happen. So just to conclude briefly, we went over the analysis of the needs and how the study, this study has extended from the earlier one. We went over the design concepts for each of the three schools and then took a look at the scope, the estimates and the timeframes. So I guess with that, if there are questions, I'd be happy to answer whatever I can.
Thank you, Mr. Schei. I'll open up to board questions. Mrs. Stein?
Thank you. I'm looking at Tara.
Thank you for that presentation. Can you just, you explained why Hindley was first on your list. Can you talk about the Royal-Holmes decision and how you ended with Holmes second and Royal third?
Sure.
Are you looking at me or are you looking back here?
Yeah, yeah.
Because either or is fine.
Well, Ellen, if you want to start with it, and then I can get into some of the architectural and systematic parts of it, if you want.
Well, for the first, for Hindley, just as John said, we looked at the portables and so on and so forth. I think there's room to put Royal right, and second, to be honest with you, you could do that if you want to bundle it that way. Initially, we were thinking, do you want to have so many projects, big project going on simultaneously and maybe, you know, disrupt a lot of people and a lot of, just have a lot of people moving and construction work going on simultaneously? But there certainly can be an argument that could be made to, like, if truth be told, I kind of had Royal second to start with, and it just wasn't, I don't think we're locked into that, that's a proposal.
Yeah, I would have put Royal second after everything we reviewed last time with the review of Royal and Hindley and Token East.
Mr. Brown?
So I guess sort of a comment and a follow-up question. It's my recollection, the discussion on portables has been going on the whole time I've been living here for about 15 years. So when I look at prioritization, it seems to me these are all a priority in that sense that this has been going on and been an issue for far too long, and I'm excited that we can try and finally resolve that. My question to you, Dr. Adley, is do you see any capacity constraint or something, why you wouldn't want to try and move on all three at the same time or as quickly as possible simultaneously?
So I would look for some expert advice on that, but essentially, look, I'd love to get these done as quickly as possible. I don't want them drawn out, if we could do them. But listen, the first thing was get rid of these portals as quickly as we possibly can, but in a thoughtful, comprehensive way. I would ask the board, actually, and would love to entertain that discussion of how we can get this done as quickly as possible and whatever way we group them together. I would be on all four of that.
Thank you. I think, Mr. Brown, that's a great question. I think some of that falls into, once we do our jobs and move it to the town to form a building committee, or con the existing building committee into staying.
We've got one.
I'm not sure what happened. But I think, you know, if we give our sense that, to your point, these are a priority, and as you go through that whole process of design and build, if it's something that's feasible, and much like we did, and believe me, it was fascinating going through the process at Ox Ridge of, you know, tearing down part of the school, not tearing apart of the school, doing a phase, not doing a phase. So I think that'll all come into play. You know, at the end of the day, we landed in the right model there by not disturbing the school and doing a phased construction versus disturbing the school and building the whole school at once. So I think that'll play out during the process, but I think if I get a feel of the sense of the board, it's like, how quickly can we move all projects forward? And I think that'll play out as we go through the initial design, build, and phase around that. So, Mr. Sini, you had your hand up?
John, thanks again that you refined the project, or the presentation even in a more comprehensive and easy-to-follow manner. I guess one of the questions I had is, when you looked at the last presentation you gave the subcommittee and the planned renovation and improvement line, there's a serious delta to the downside in terms of the costs associated with that to what you presented this evening. Can you just walk us through what those delta, what that delta is, what drove that? It was at least at two of the three schools.
Right. So in terms of the costs presented to the facilities committee, and I'll summarize what is different in tonight's presentation or what was prepared and dated February 19th to what was done coming out of the facility subcommittee. For one, there was the exclusion of the priority one items. So each school had, each school had priority one infrastructure costs associated with the capital plan. Those were removed from this cost summary. So at, quickly, at Hindley, that included curb sidewalk, blacktop replacement at the bus loop, new emergency lighting at egress doors, and providing a new wireless clock system. So all those costs came out at Hindley. Again, because it was approved, so it was only a cost shift. So if it's already been approved, then that, those costs were excluded from this outlook. At Holmes, priority one items included the design of the HVAC system at the original building, new emergency lighting at egress doors, new wireless clock system, and then construction of the new HVAC system, new boilers converting steam to hot water. Yes, at Holmes. So Holmes had the biggest drop, and that was because the, I believe the HVAC boilers and piping project alone is about 4.2 million. So that was, that was reduced. And at Royal, the roof on the 1996 original building, new emergency lighting at each egress doors, and the new wireless clock system were all priority one items removed. Now, I will say, there were some items that were also removed from the KG and D study because further discussion with Mike Lynch and more in-depth review, mostly at Holmes and at Royal, resulted in the fact that those were, there were some projects that were already done, or there were some projects that were duplicated in the master plan already. So there were some that, the name changed, I didn't know it, Mike pointed it out to me, we got it done, and we got the update done. So it was just a, it was just a further, there was some delving into the detail there, but I would say the vast majority of it had to do with the fact that anything that was a priority one comprehensive capital plan project were removed from these cost projections.
Perfect, thank you. Mrs. Ritchie?
So I would love to see that itemized schedule. I don't know why I don't have it, but is that something that was distributed to the committee?
It's in the memo. It's down the bottom here in each thing.
I don't have that.
Items excluded.
Is it here? Did I just get it tonight? No, it's in the board pack.
No, it's in the board pack.
Oh, okay. So it's in the board pack from tonight. Gotcha. Okay, sorry about that. I was having trouble following on. But thank you, John, for this presentation. This is something, well, Katie and I were on the Token East and Royal Building Committee. When was that, 2015? So I had kids in Royal, and I know that building all too well. So I will be happy when that first floor wing gets torn down because it really needs to. So I'm all for trying to accelerate these projects and get them done as soon as possible. And I guess that is all timing the Ox Ridge elementary school getting completed and moving all those students out of the portables and into allocation. So I thank you for this presentation, and I look forward to continuing to work this process.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. Mrs. Akman?
So in terms of prioritization, I think what's before the board is, Dr. Adley, is there an educational priority to any of these? I think that's really what we need to hear and decide, such that if we were to go to the town, we would say this one needs to be done first. Mrs. Ritchie is correct, there's a lot of history with Royal. Those parents have been asking for a long time for something to be happened there, so I do think that's something to take into account. But I think of outside of an educational priority, our job might be to put the package forward to the town, because the town would probably have to look at what infrastructure throughout the town, what could the Mansfield corridor take with traffic or machinery, what type of police presence is needed, how they can divide that. So my request would be for the administration to come forward and let us know if there is a priority educational need. Outside of that, as the board decides what projects to move forward together, I would suggest we move a package forward that either contains educational priority or requests all projects and to work with the town to lay out how best to do that, given all the resources involved that will be needed. and to work with the town to lay out how best to do that, given all the resources involved that will be needed.
I think that I would probably say that, by the way, I did want to say, I want to recognize Mike and John again for working on some educational specifications that are underneath all of this and are available for viewing and so on and so forth. That really guided it. I would say, though, administratively, my number one priority is always safety. That's the first land. So my first lands then continues to be Hinley, just because of the distance of the portables, the number of them, the condition of them. And then if you were educationally, I would go to Royal because it's just hard to accomplish the instructional things that our teachers want to do and the way we want contemporary education to work in the spaces that are there. So it's for that that I would, if you were asking for those lands, I would put Hinley, Royal, and Holmes in, in that order.
So I think, Mr. Dean, if I may, I think that's essential information for the Board of Education, to know that there seems to be a safety concern, and then there is an educational concern. And then we could go forward to the town with this package, expressing those ideas and why we are prioritizing them. So that when the town is making this decision, they understand why we're coming forward with these projects. And I just think that that's the decision for the Board of Education that we should focus on.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Mr. Brown?
It was kind of covered. I was just going to touch on safety, and that applies equally to all of these. And I think we can't lose sight and just focus on education. I think our charge is a little broader. We just need to make sure we do take the safety of the facilities because that is an important driver as well.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. Parent?
I just want to echo my excitement about these projects. I've been, as you all know, screaming about this for years and years, and I'm thrilled that we are at this point. And I think to Dr. Adley's point, it's exciting that all of our elementary schools will be equitable in terms of their instructional opportunities. I would just like a little more clarity on the Curtis property at Holmes. And if, what, who does that belong to? Is that involved in this at all? You know, there's been talk about extending the parking lot at Holmes. Just a little more clarity as to where that, what the status is on that.
So that's included in the site, do you know? Let me hear it, not my, but Holmes.
Yep. So Sarah, that was originally, it was originally purchased by the town more from a security standpoint and having private property access that parking lot. So it can be part of the overall project here.
So is that under the Board of Education?
Yes.
Okay, great. That's part of the site scope number, right? Look at that.
So...
Mrs. Ackman?
So to that property, Sarah, if your question is who controls that property, that property is still controlled by the town. They've been very open to hearing how the board would like to use that. So it's exciting to see it in these plans, but control of that property rests with the town.
And we've already, I've already had conversations with the town. And they're very much interested in it being part of our project.
Great.
So that's why it's been incorporated.
Thank you.
Mr. Seeny?
I also just want to call out the fact that, you know, I know the subcommittee got a little ahead of its skis on the classroom study, but it actually became a very important part of this whole project. So, you know, again, maybe we got a little ahead of us as a committee, but it was extremely helpful to this plan that's being brought forth. Yeah, and just to follow up on that for the facilities committee and Dr. Adley and Mike Lynch and Mr. Rudel, too. You know, I think the goal was to incorporate and look at all the facilities, projects, and the priority one projects that are out there and really start to build an overall master plan of where we're headed that sees us out five or 10 years. And, you know, one of the next things that has to be part of this, too, I think the one school that had the most improvement from a bus loop and a drive standpoint was Hinley. So, you know, the goal is to have all those things continue to be incorporated into that. What needs to change in terms of parking and driving and stuff like that? So the only thing, I don't necessarily know the process, but as we go, as we move this process along, I would just go, some of the, one of the priority one things here for Hinley is curbing and sidewalk and blacktop around the bus loop and all. And that would be a major construction project up front there with tearing down that thing. So that's something that we might have to look at sooner than later as we finalize the budget process and not put money into that as this construction project moves forward.
Mrs. McCammon?
I just wanted to say thank you to John and Alan and the committee because we asked you to go back and take a look at the priorities and come back with a bigger look. I know the original scope was just libraries and portables, but it became clear that we were sort of neither nor, and you couldn't just solve with that lens. So this is, it's really exciting to see a prioritization that's comprehensive as a look. And also, I think, you know, efficient in terms of both achieving the instructional and safety goals and being smart about it. My question is fairly simple. You talked a little bit about building in escalation. So in a lot of our numbers, there's always a little bit of a range, right? Because it kind of depends on where your contractors come in. What impact do you, did escalation have? Could you be a little more specific in how you built your numbers, given what we're seeing right now in material costs?
Yeah, the, so if I understand the question, then the 40% overall soft costs was looking at, was using more or less an industry standard to encompass the potential for all of the things that could fall into that line item or the line items that would comprise overall soft costs. The general, the general thought here is that it's not sure when these projects will happen, given some of the phasing, but we were at one point in time subtracting a couple percent off of 40% to about 38% if we thought it was going to happen right away. Or we were going to add a couple percent if we thought it was five years out. So as of right now, the overall look here is about, is about an 8% escalation. That would put us to, that would put us at about 4% per year, in theory, if the projects went to construction in about two years from now. That's still, you know, and like I said, three months ago, there was talk of just taking escalation off the board if you were going to do anything within a year, a year and a half, because there just wasn't going to be escalation. But material costs have continued to be a thorn and don't show any too much slowdown. You know, overall, I think that the, looking at soft costs can be a challenge. And I would say we look, we look to construction managers for their input, and we work with ONG, we work with others. And that's about what they're seeing for escalation right now, is a 4% to 5% per year.
Thank you. Mrs. Ritchie?
I guess, where do we go from here? This all sounds great. Let's keep the process moving, and what do we need to do next?
Which is where I was headed. Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. Once all questions are done, any other questions or comments? Mr. Maroni?
So this is more of a request than a question, but we have on our calendar a tour of the schools of the 13th of March, since we didn't do it last year due to COVID. I think it'd be great if we can find a way to do that. And just a suggestion is, a few years ago, the RTM, when they built the Public Works Garage, they had Channel 79 come to videotape the tour so that you don't, because you couldn't have that many. And I think they did the same with the police station. I think if the nine of us and some of the administration could go through and have someone do a tour, it might, it would be super beneficial if we could lay out some cones or something on where the new additions would be proposed. I think that would be fabulous.
That's a great idea.
Thank you, Mr. Maroni. Good. Any other questions or comments?
Just a quick, just a quick comment to Ms. Ackman's question, too. Just to delineate a wee bit further, there's SRBI, IDA, and Word Languages and so on, all have their own spaces here, right? Which they should have and don't currently at the moment.
So I think Mr. Seeny did, I think, a back-of-the-napkin numbers. And at the end of the day, if you total just these numbers up here, you're looking at about $55 million at the high end to get all three of these schools to where we think they need to be from an educational standpoint. And you compare that to a $56 million build on a new Ox Ridge school. So I think the value is there in terms of getting these schools to where we need them. So next steps I would recommend, if the board is in agreement, that, too, I think Mrs. Ackman brought up a good point, is from the administration, kind of the ed specs and then a prioritization as you see them from a safety and educational standpoint. And that package to come to the board to review for them, that package would then move to the town for the building committee process with the town, if that makes sense. Good. All right.
So I, can I just, just before, when I was asking for that information, John, I was looking for, I guess, how you got from a, with the infrastructure costs, because they seem to have come down considerably. And I'm trying to follow along with what was in there before and now what was taken out. We seem to have a much lower number now. Is that something, did you prepare something for before, all those, all those original infrastructure costs that were included? Or is that something that was only prepared for tonight? In other words, I'm trying to back into like what was taken out. Now, these are priority ones that I guess are in our capital budget, but the differential seems pretty high. So I'm just curious what those projects were that came out from your original presentation. Did you guys get that at facilities?
We did not.
Oh, you didn't, okay.
No, there was...
That's what I was looking, I just kind of wanted to see where you guys were originally, when the numbers were higher, and how we got to where we are today.
But...
Mr. Seeny?
So in this board packet, there's notations below the, which was taken out, so...
Right, I'm just looking for dollars. I mean, I could do it myself, I guess I could back into it myself. I'm just curious if you guys had gotten something originally in your first packet. Okay.
All right.
Well, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Shun. If I may, I can prepare some additional information that highlights what the items were removed and what those costs were.
I don't want to make you do too much work. I was just, I thought maybe the, I thought you brought something, and I just...
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. Thank you, Mr. Shun. Great. Thank you for your time this evening, and thank you for all the work and the presentations that you've done to us. We appreciate it.
John, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Moving along to discussion on January 2021, 2020, 2021 financial report and possible actions on proposed budget transfers.
So this is the financial report through January. We are reporting a current projected deficit of $1,029,293, or about 1% of the budget. This does not include the special appropriation that was approved last night by the RTM of $1,788,130. The general education RCs are forecasting a positive $152,000. The special education RCs are forecasting a positive $600,000. And then reopening costs at deficit of 1.77 million. There is a swing from the prior month of about a million. It is basically from three items. The first is the award of SR2 for $596,000. While we haven't received the money yet, but we are including it in the forecast. Excess costs, we did change the reimbursement rates from 67.5% to 75%. That's a swing of about $268,000. And then about $150,000 in added district transportation costs. And that is due to us not paying any expenditures for days in which outplacement, outplacement facilities are closed. Similar to last month, we're showing the COVID reopening expenditures. We are totaling about $3.5 million, including grants. The grants, including the SR2, were just over $1 million. Backing out those grants and the transfers that have been approved to date at $649,000, we're left with that deficit of 1.77 million. So similar to the previous months, we included a bridge of the changes in the reopening expenditures from the December forecast to the current forecast. We did reduce our forecast for part-time custodians, and that's just a fluctuation of less hours worked. A reduction in campus monitors, as we have only hired three of the four that were recommended. We had some benefit changes due to some school closures, partly from that period in January we were closed, and then the two snow day slash remote days, additional funds needed for the cafeteria shortfall, a small amount of savings from the contracted LPNs because we were closed again for those couple of snow days, a small adjustment to technology, and then we did ask for the buses to have an additional deep cleaning, which is an additional $5,400. And then you'll see that SR Part II award of $596,000 that gets us down to the 1.77 million. So looking at salaries, we do have a negative variance in salaries of $687,000. We have a positive balance of about $55,000 in interns, $9,700 in clubs and councils, turnover savings of about $300,000, contract support of about $48,000, and then reopening costs are a deficit of $1.1 million. Looking at the operating account, that is a deficit as well. We have a small positive balance in professional meetings and travel, a positive balance in legal fees, a small negative variance in special education software, some small favorable balances in audit, the annual audit cost, music lease for about $3,300. Contracted adult ed is $4,500, so positive. Special education transportation, both out of district and in district, are a positive $186,000. Contracted services are a deficit of $126,000, but there are two transfers for approval to offset those. Special education tuition is a positive $200,000, and then COVID reopening expenditures are a deficit of $658,000. Looking at fixed, we are at a negative $25,860. Small positive variances in regular transportation and property insurance, negative variance that we continue to carry over for unemployment insurance. We are adding a slight negative variance in health insurance due to census changes and an uptick in dental claims. And then a positive variance in utilities of just under $55,000, primarily from sewer and electricity. The forecast for equipment is a negative $12,000. It is a small negative variance in reopening expenditures of not $12,962, and then a very small positive balance in art and science equipment. Total revenue is actually forecasted to be a positive now. Building rentals and field rentals largely offset. That's a product of us not renting out our buildings due to COVID, but having more opportunities to rent out our fields as a positive $70,000. As I mentioned earlier, excess costs, we have updated the forecast to show a positive variance of $169,000. We did actually, just this afternoon, receive our first reimbursement. It was a little over $2 million. So that first reimbursement has been received, and we'll get the balance at the end of May. ELP tuition is a negative $89,000, so the total revenue forecast is a positive $80,000. We do have two transfers for approval. The first is for $92,744 to fund contracted speech. The funds are coming from a speech therapist who's an employee who's on leave of absence. And so we're just providing those speech services in a different manner, using a contracted service provider as opposed to an employee. So it's really a reallocation of expenditures. And then again, $33,879 to fund consulting services for an individual on a leave of absence that is being covered through contracted support.
Thank you, Mr. Rudel. Board questions and comments? Mrs. McCammon?
Thank you, Rich. Can you talk a little bit more about the special education transportation number? I know we knew there was going to be some funniness in that number. We've been talking about it since the fall, but haven't necessarily seen anything definitive. Can you explain the timeline and why it's showing up now?
Sure. So typically, when we're closed, for like for a student for in district, we're seeing expenditures of about 85%. We have gotten confirmation, we haven't paid anything to date, but we were kind of holding back money should we have to pay a small portion for days in which facilities that are out of district facilities, where the students are remote or not attending for whatever various reason, we're not paying any expenditure. And so that released, but we were kind of holding back in that 80% within that forehand to get to that about $150,000 positive variance.
Any other further questions or comments? Mrs. Ritchie?
So just the excess costs, we got $2 million. Is that, I guess, based on what we've received in the past? Is that a good indication of what the total amount is, or is it still anyone's guess?
So it is based on our December 1 filing. So we'll make that March 1 filing next week. It represents, it's intended to represent 75% of what you should intend to get. So at that point, we should get about $2.7 million, which would be that 83.4% reimbursement rate that the state had mentioned. However, when the state actually makes that second payment of the 25% balance, we do it based on the March 1 filing. We are anticipating our March 1 filing to be about $200,000 less than our December 1 filing, which $150,000 of that is that added district transportation expenditures. So we would not expect necessarily to get that 2.7%. Additionally, one of the reasons the state has it at 83.4%, districts in December just did not submit a lot of expenditures. They were about $15 million less than anticipated. So the state has a flat budget of about $140 million. So the less expenditures that districts submit across the state of Connecticut means there's upward pressure on that reimbursement rate. The more expenditures districts submit against that budget of $140 million at the state, there's downward pressure on that reimbursement rate. So if the anticipation is that districts are going to actually do the reverse, really, of what we're doing for the March 1 filing because they've been open longer, we'll see higher claims going and then downward pressure on that reimbursement rate, which is why conservatively, we're forecasting that 70%. conservatively we're forecasting that 75%.
So you, yeah, I mean, that's basically what I'm getting at. It's still probably a pretty good estimate based on even with the 2 million that we received today, that we should stay at 75% reimbursement rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Akman.
Mr. Rudel, the intern account running at a surplus at the moment, it seems as if we probably won't be taking in interns at this point. What do we intend for that account at this moment?
So we do have interns in schools. We just have less interns than anticipated. We've had difficulty getting the typical count of interns that we have at the school. So that balance is based on the fact that we just haven't had the amount of interns in the fall and even a portion of spring. So that is really just money that's going to sit in a positive balance account that could be transferred to cover a potential expenditure that could arise as the year progresses.
So after we pull down the appropriation that we received last night and we run that through those boards, will we be able to take a look? And maybe we can do this as a finance committee at what lines are running in deficit, what in surplus, and see where we need to true up and/or at what time it would be appropriate to do the true up?
Sure. I mean, the accounts that really that we're still flagging as a deficit, besides the two that have recommended transfers, it's ELP tuition. Probably be beneficial to leave it as a deficit, but know that you have that money sitting elsewhere so that you can flag that you just did not have that many students that you were anticipating. And then a small amount in special education software, which will require a transfer at some point, whether we use it for the interns or something else. And then there's always variability in certain expenditures like utilities or substitute costs. So those might be areas that we might look forward in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Seeny.
So what we covered is, you know, net of the special appropriation running somewhere in the 750,000 range in surplus. I guess my question is, now that the appropriation's been approved, is there a delay period in which you get to pull it down? That's the first question. Second, if you can walk through the mechanics of pulling it down. If we don't need it, do you still pull it or help us understand?
So there is a 10-day waiting period that has to occur between when the RTM approved it last night and when then it's officially ours. So that would be early March. You get it all at once. It's not like drawing down on the grant. So that whole 1.78 million comes to the Board of Education. You'll see a one-sided budget entry in RC 28 against the variety accounts, whether it's the teachers or custodians, the contracted services, et cetera. For the balances that you see in the non-COVID account, whether it's excess costs or some of the interns or things like that, really at the end of the year, if you're not going to use it, once we reconcile our books, it gets returned to the general fund. So last year, we returned about 567. In theory, it could be that or more or less, depending on obviously how the year shakes out. If we don't have, the one thing that's a little different this year is excess costs. We're getting more money, not because we spent more money, but because the reimbursement rate's lower. So typically, if you get more excess costs, you're getting it because you spent more on related services or tuition or transportation or whatever it might be. So it's likely that when we return money to the town, it's going to be a large amount that's going to be from excess costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seeny. Mrs. Ritchie.
Just a question on the fees from the YMCA. Have we been billed already for the boys swimming and the gymnastics? And have we paid that? I'm just curious.
We've only paid for the girls swimming in the fall. The others, we haven't, but we've numbered it.
Okay, but we, have we been billed?
We haven't been billed.
I'm assuming the answer is COVID, but the reason we can't find interns is not something pragmatic, but COVID? Okay.
Not really, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Good. Mrs. Akman.
Dr. Adley and Rich, is there anything that will significantly alter that you can foresee at this point? And I know we talked a little bit about, you know, if we needed to close for a week or something that wouldn't significantly alter our budget forecast at the moment. But is there anything that you see on the horizon that the board should be aware of that would significantly alter this forecast at this time of year?
I don't think we'll see significant changes. But one of the things we could talk about this morning, if we're closed, for whatever reason, whether it's COVID-related or we have snow remote days like we had in early February, that's going to create additional losses in the period account. Because if school's not in, we're not selling lunches, we still have the staff, for example. But in, on the flip side, we'd likely have less expenditures for contract cleaning, contracted LPNs, because we, we're closed, the elementary schools are closed, for example, we're not paying for those LPNs. So we might see line item variances that might have to get adjusted, but in the aggregate, we wouldn't expect any significant changes. The bulk of our COVID expenditures really were made upfront, whether it was the hiring of the teachers, purchasing plexiglass, bringing in additional custodians, staff, or buying certain technology. So a lot of that really kind of already went out the door and was.
So this is a general forecast for the current mode that we're in, all in, and I would accommodate if we weren't for the most part.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman. Mrs. McCammon.
One more. The nurses, the elementary school nurses, so they're not doing contact tracing during our remote days, is that correct? Or are they working for the schools doing remote tracing?
So when we're fully remote and closed, we're not utilizing them. They're typically there for the isolation room.
Okay.
So since schools are closed, they wouldn't be in the isolation room.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Mrs. Ritchie.
And just to highlight, so the full board knows that the meeting this morning, I requested that the grants be shown just on the RC summaries that we know. And we know they're embedded in there, but just to.
So we'll do that for the February report.
Okay, great. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. Good. All right, we'll move that forward. Do I have a motion to approve the January budget transfers? Mrs. Ritchie, second. Mrs. Stein, all those in favor? I'm sure Mr. Brown favors it, but he's not here. Thank you, Mrs. Akman. Let me see your hand. Good. Moving along, further discussion and action on board master agenda for February through August 2021.
So this is revised based on some of the feedback from the board and some of the administrative reflection on what we can do and what we can't do. So I'll just go through it real quickly. February 25th, as you know, is our strategic planning. March 10th, just, there's a couple of the items that have come up there. The two are gifts. One of them is for soccer. And the other one is from the Darien Foundation for Robotics, which I'll continue to share with the board in advance of that. But that was a grant that were awarded, so they will come through. I don't have it listed here because I don't typically list an executive session, but one that I can mention because it has to be an executive session is the safety. So probably the 23rd of March, I'll do the update on safety in an executive session. May 11th, if you look at May 11th, I have a review of the district technology plan. This, this is at the suggestion, I believe, of Mr. Brown. And I know it may not be fully encompassing, but I would suggest that if we present that plan and the framework that it represents, that may present an opportunity to then go further and include some of the things that perhaps are on board members' minds. But it gives us an opportunity just to get the State of the Union, so to speak, to start with.
Is that okay? Okay.
Moving on, June 22nd, there's a review of the program through, sorry, gifted review of the program. So one of the, one of the things I'm considering doing there, I have a Minister of Intern, Teresa Rangel, and I'm going to suggest with the board's understanding, because in fairness, this is a, this is a fairly sensitive, right, issue, right? And sometimes can be politically charged issues and concerns and so on. I'm very confident for her to do it, but I would also ask her to liaison with Renzoli, Gifted and Talented Program at UConn to help with the facilitation of a review of the program with the board's understanding that I was going to do that. So we feel as if we can accomplish that for the June 22nd board. The rest of the, the rest of the topics, per se, really fall under the July retreat. And you can, I won't read them to you, but you can see them there. So that's.
Okay, thank you. Any, yes, Mrs. Ritchie.
The review of the Student Activities Fund, I guess, just a little more detail on that. I mean, I would like us to take a look at the manual. That was something that we discussed in July of 2020 when we had Chris's presentation to us. That was one of the, there were four things he wanted, he suggested that we focus on. That was one of them. So I'm hoping that the review of Student Activities Fund would include a discussion about potentially doing an update to that manual. The last was done in 2015. I think that would be the policy committee that would be.
Yeah, I think, I appreciate, I'll extend a thank you out to everyone that sent in information to me and kind of followed a little bit of the outline, but that really helps. And I think to your point, Mrs. Ritchie, I think that some of that stuff was outlined in there in terms of policy manuals and stuff like that. So we'll take all that under review for that discussion, and there'll be some pre-work that'll have to be done. And we may have to come back to you all to make sure we're covering all that items.
So I would just, I would kind of just add on to that, just, I would go back to the information that Chris gave because there were four things that he suggested. And I don't have to read them to you, but I think that those, that's a good starting point because that is work that has not been completed. So we should probably go back and revisit that.
Yes, Mr.?
May I just ask the board a respectful question, please? So the presentation discussion that has tended to be on here for the Darien High School's second semester, so that's really part of the agenda for March 10th. This is a historical thing, so I don't know the value that the board places on it. We recently just had relatively, seems like it anyway, the update on the class sizes that really don't change, per se. I just don't know how much the board values that. I don't, value is the wrong word, but the necessity to have that on the, on the board agenda. Again, in fact, I haven't lived through it. Once, I would suggest, but maybe don't, but I'll defer to the board.
If it doesn't change significantly, I don't know that it's necessary.
That might create an opportunity for further discussion on the facilities plan.
Yeah.
If that works from a time.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes, hi, Mrs. Akman.
Dr. Adley, what is it you want to change about that report and on what date?
It's, Tara, it's on March 10th. And the suggestion on the floor is not to have it on agenda at all, that it's rather, potentially is rather redundant.
The first bullet, Tara.
No, I see it. I would like to have it back on, but if the board wants to lose it, that's a board decision.
What is the value to you, Tara?
I think the value is what we've done is closely monitor those sections, and we're looking at second semester because it's helped us, especially when we're looking at forming new classes or what class areas like STEM need to expand or not, especially since we're talking about bringing new classes, which I agree with, not during budget season, to understand where student interest is, where staffing is. We've sometimes seen concerns in foreign languages of classes, whether they're available or not. It's helped us to decide whether to add higher level classes or not, whether to drop certain classes. Historically, it's, it's, it's proved helpful. I'm not sure why we drop it, but that's just my opinion, having some historical context on it.
Mrs. Ritchie.
Is there any way we could do a more abbreviated presentation? So in other words, maybe just highlight those things that you just mentioned that could potentially be flagged as something that the board needs to think about and discuss more instead of getting the whole big comprehensive overview?
Yeah, so my, to that point, to Mrs. Akman and Mrs. Ritchie's point, my comment would be is, is March 10th, I like the abbreviated style of a report. But that's bedtime reading for yourself. But is the timing also, could the timing be better, Alan, in terms, would there be more information if we push?
Nope, time is fine. Time is fine. It doesn't.
Okay.
They're ready to go tomorrow. We have to do it.
Okay. All right, so we'll keep it on there and.
Can you abbreviate it is the other question?
Abbreviated report with, if you have all the detail, you can send it out, but I think the report to the board should be abbreviated.
So I'll focus on mainly the second semester and some of the courses.
Yeah, I don't think you need every teacher broken out per class. I think what Tara's saying is correct, sort of an overall grid of what classes are on the bubble, what are under enrolled. Because at the high school, things change each semester, so enrollment isn't the same as the first semester, and we have used it going forward. We did have issues with some English classes and other things that informed us for enrollment and hiring for the following year.
Good. Thank you, Mrs. Stein. Good. Any other further comments or discussion? Yes, Mrs. Stein.
Clarifying on the idea, because I, Deb and I have been wanting idea on the agenda. Can you just explain, when you say you're going to enlist UConn and the Rizzoli, explain what that is? Are we contracting them to do a study? Are they working with?
So, so, at the last board meeting, there was some discussion of consultant, sort of, right? So I'm not just going out and hiring a consultant, per se, right? But have worked with UConn School of Talented and Gifted before. We know the people well up there, so have good contacts in that regard. And I would just use somebody as a, as a sort of liaison, perhaps a couple of times, but not, not in a full capacity of a contract. And my intern, who's a UConn intern, right, is a principal, is well familiar with special education, well, following the relevant special education. But Talented and Gifted programs is well versed in it, and it would be a resource for her. And it would be a good learning experience for her, too. I would not ask the person to do it if I did not think that she could do an excellent job of it, but it would be a resource to use in terms of creating the framework. And it just would be a resource. It's not the, the consultant would not be the person who would be doing the predominant amount of work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Akman.
I think, Mrs. Stein, I think if this was your, what you're asking is, is there, is there an expense board to consider for that work, Dr. Adley?
It would be limited in nature if it was, Tara. I don't know if you froze or just froze with the answer.
No, I was trying to follow that up. I guess, I guess what I'd say is, if it's with, if it's within the birds, if it's within the superintendent's purview, that's fine, but if it's an expense. And I actually think it would be really useful to get a fresh set of eyes. So I'm actually not opposed to an expense in this area, but I think if there's an expense to the board, we just need to know what it is.
Yeah, that's fair. Mrs. McCammon.
I have a more general question that might be better on Thursday. You can decide, but I'll use this as an example. So I know we have differentiation as a line item in the strategic plan, and that there is some, some desire to look at how we differentiate in our classrooms. When we are thinking about, are you considering IDEA separately from the strategic plan? And I ask that in part to understand how you're thinking about Gifted and Talented, and in part to understand how the strategic plan will work with the master agenda.
I actually try to weave all of those things together from my entry plan, the things that were mentioned, to the things that are actually in the strategic plan. So we don't, we wouldn't, as your actual suggestion, don't look at these programs in isolation. What, the strategic plan, I'm particularly excited about it in a sense, because it is going to inform what we do and how we do it. Right? So the fact that it's not completed and not fully adopted doesn't mean to say that I'm not going to, like, use the essence of it, right? So I will use it as another document, framework, lands of looking at, whatever it is we're looking at, in this case, it's the IDEA program.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCammon. Any further questions or comments? Mrs. Ritchie.
Just clarifying, the review of reciprocal agreement for use of facilities with the YMCA, so we, we don't have that currently in place. So is it then your plan to put a reciprocal agreement in place to discuss at the retreat? Or are we discussing a reciprocal agreement?
Just discussing that, what we have, what we don't have, and.
Yep.
So we're.
I know how we want to plan it going forward. Good. All right. So do I have a motion to approve the master agenda? Mr. Seeny, second by Mrs. Stein, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Good. We'll move on to, no updates from Mrs. Sion. We'll move on to public comment.
Good evening.